First, I'd like to introduce and talk to you about Julia. The will to win means nothing compared to the will to prepare. Juma Azanga, Tanzanian winner of the 1989 New York City Marathon. A true story of resiliency and the art of collaboration between sports at the high school. Julia joined the 2019 team after four meets, but it could not have come at the right time. It came at the most opportune time. I had pursued Julia all track season in eighth grade, encouraging her to come out and join cross country. When I learned that she was playing JV B soccer this fall, I assumed that was it. Never wanting to give up and learning that Julia was continuing to run on her own after soccer practices and on weekends, I went to speak to Julia and asked her if she was interested in possibly pursuing both sports at the same time. She adamantly said yes. After talking with her parents, soccer coaches, athletic director, we collaboratively worked out a schedule where Julia could do both sports. Her first meet as a runner, Julia won the Strongsville Invitational with a debut time of 18:33. Her next meet, she ran another 18:33 and bested her first time by a half a second, which is the second fastest time ever run by a Strongsville girl cross-country runner. Julia finished third at the Medina Invitational, fifth at the Greater Cleveland Conference Championship Meet, earning first-team All-GCC, first at the District Championship, ninth at the Regional Championship, and 31st at the State Championship, missing All-Ohio by one spot, but becoming the second-fastest freshman in the state meet. Julia's resiliency was on display throughout the season as she tested herself by competing in two sports, maintaining high academic honors, earning Greater Cleveland Conference academic honors, and in the process embraced the sport of distance running and competed at the highest level with resiliency. For your efforts, you are now the number-one freshman runner in Strongsville Girls Cross-Country, number-two on the all-time list, and you have a wonderful running career I'll have you for many years to come. Megan Vapinick. William Shakespeare said, "Bid me run, and I will strive with things impossible." What a final farewell tour you had this senior year. Just to put some perspective into Megan's accomplishments this year, which were really a culmination of all her hard work and dedication to the sport. Before this season, Megan's best time as a runner was 2005. For her final act this season, she ran in ten races. Every race Megan competed in was in the 19s. We could see this was coming by what she accomplished this past track season in the spring, running times in the two-mile that she was never able to run in previous seasons, which translated into future success for this fall. Here are Megan's finishes in all the races before the Regional and State Championships: fourth, ninth, 12th, sixth, fifth, seventh, fourth at the District Championship. In the process, Megan captured first-team All-GCC, regional qualifier from the district meet, state qualifier for her performance at the Regional Championship, academic All-Ohio, scholar athlete. In the GCC, she also earned a scholar athlete, seventh all-time in the history of seniors, number-nine all-time in the history of girls cross-country on the Super-30 list, and we actually do keep lists. Her accomplishments are an extension of who Megan is. Megan never settles. You can tell that from the end of each race just how much she has left on the course. If Nike ever needs a new image for their commercials, they only need to see Megan run because it encompasses everything there is about her. In addition, Megan earned academic honors, All-Ohio honors. From the bottom of our hearts, Coach Nally, Camardo, and I salute Megan and thank her for her enduring legacy and contributions that you have made to the sport of cross-country and for your inspiration on the rest of the girls on the team. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thanks, Coach.
Congratulations, Julia. Congratulations, Megan. Good luck to you in the future. Congratulations.
We're extremely proud of your efforts. Coach King, Coach Seroni, thank you for your efforts and all the work and timeless efforts and energy you give to our students, not only in the classroom but beyond on the golf course or on the track. And Coach Seroni, if somebody ever has to give a speech about me in the future, man, you are my guy. Phenomenal job by both coaches, so thank you to our student athletes and our coaches as well. Colonel?
Thank you, Dr. Reiba. We don't have any public comment tonight, so we'll go right into the superintendent's report, but before we do, students, congratulations on your achievements, and parents and coaches, if you'd like to leave at this time, you're more than welcome to. And Joe, you can have the rest of the night off, too. Dr. Reiba?
Thank you, Colonel Evans. So for our report to the community, I'm asking Laura Howson to come up. Just to give a little background before Laura starts, every, we develop our school district calendar in two-year cycles. So the 2019-2020 calendar is the last year that we currently have publicized, and the procedure we use is we develop a calendar committee, which is a representative group of teachers, of support staff, of administrators, and parents. Laura served on the committee the last couple times, but as a parent representative. So what she's going to do here in a minute is share some highlights of those calendars. What the law says is that we have to have a public calendar hearing. This is what we're doing right now, is have a public hearing. After we have the hearing, we have to wait 30 days before the board could take action on the calendar. So Laura's going to present some highlights. I will send an update to parents in the community tomorrow, sharing the draft calendar and informing them that if they have any feedback on the calendar, they have until our January organizational meeting where the board will take action. So Laura, you ready?
I'm ready.
All right.
I should have asked you ahead of time, are you going to put them on the whiteboard?
I do have them on the board. And before you start, I also wanted to thank Ian Stephan, who's here. He was also a member of the calendar committee, so I appreciate him being here and showing his support for the work the committee did.
All right. Well, good evening, Dr. Reiba, Mrs. Pelco, Mr. Agnastu, and school board members. I am here tonight representing the calendar committee. Our group was made up of 12 administrators, staff members, and parents. We met twice to discuss and decide the 2020-2021 school calendar and the 2021-2022 school calendar. We were given some guidelines to consider as we started working on the calendars. We needed 178 to 180 student days, one convocation day prior to school starting, one professional development day, one record slash professional development day, and two conference comp days. A few goals we were given were 45 days per quarter, 60 days per trimester, attempting to have the first day of school after August 20th. Excluding Thanksgiving week, all school weeks should have a minimum of three school days. We should try to have the first semester end by Christmas. This makes it easier for our high school students so they don't have to come back after a two-week break and take midterms and finals. We needed to work in four parent-teacher conferences in the evenings, two in the fall and two in the spring, and two early release days on Fridays, near the end of the first and third quarters. As a side note, all Polaris districts have agreed to have spring break the week after Good Friday. So if you look at the 2020-2021 calendar, you will see we have the convocation day on August 17th, with our grades 1 through 9 students starting on August 18th, along with kindergarten orientation. Our kindergarten in grades 10 through 12 will start on the 19th. Preschool will have their first day on the 20th. Our first quarter consists of 42 days, with parent-teacher conferences on September 30th, October 1st, 6th, and 7th. October 9th is a conference comp day, and the quarter ends on October 16th. The first trimester is ending on November 13th, with 61 days in it. The second quarter is ending on December 17th. Again, our goal was to end the semester before Christmas so our students with finals and midterms could not have interrupted instructional time and could go on break and not have to worry about coming back to take exams. Our first semester ends with 82 days. Winter break will be December 21st through January 1st. Our teachers and staff will have a records day on December 17th, so our students will not be in school that day. So it gives them almost over a two-week break for winter. The second semester starts on January 4th, with the second set of parent-teacher conferences scheduled for February 2nd, 3rd, 10th, and 11th. We have no school on February 15th for President's Day, and the second trimester ending on February 26th with 59 days. Our third quarter will be ending on March 12th with 48 days, and we put in the professional development day on March 15th, along with another early release day on March 26th. April 2nd, we are off for Good Friday, and then spring break will be the following week, April 5th through the 9th. This takes us into May, where we have the fourth quarter ending on May 28th. This will be the kids' last day of school. We would then be off May 31st for Memorial Day and June 1st as a conference comp day. The fourth quarter would have 48 days, like the third. The third trimester would be 58 days. We felt having more days in the second semester would be helpful with the amount of testing our students have in the spring, as well as most of our cold and snow days happen in that second semester. So overall, this gives our students 80, 100, our teachers 182 days, with our students being their 178 days. So that's the first calendar. The second calendar, the calendar for the 2021-2022 school year, it looks very similar to the previous year. Convocation day will be August 16th, with school starting for the students on the 17th, 18th, and 19th. Parent-teacher conferences would be September 29th, 30th, and October 5th and 6th, with a conference comp day, no school on October 8th. The first quarter would then end on October 15th with 42 days. Early release will be on October 22nd. The first trimester would end November 12th with 61 days. We would have a traditional Thanksgiving break with quarter two, first semester ending on December 16th with 40 days for the quarter, 82 days for the semester. December 17th will be a records day for staff with no school for students. Winter break will take place December 20th through December 31st, with school resuming on January 3rd. The second set of parent-teacher conferences will be February 1st, 2nd, 9th, and 10th. No school on February 21st for President's Day, and the second trimester would be ending on February 25th with 59 days. The third quarter would then end March 11th with 48 days. March 14th will be a professional development day with no school. March 25th would then be an early release day. April 15th will be no school for Good Friday, and spring break would be the following week from April 18th through the 22nd. Bring us into May again. May 27th will be the last day of school, end of the fourth quarter, with 48 days in that quarter. May 30th is Memorial Day, and the 31st would be our last conference comp day. Does anyone have any questions? Yes?
I do. Why did we move spring break from March to April? And we went from the first week of April to the third week of April?
Yes. We are aligning our calendar with Polaris.
Okay.
And they always traditionally do theirs the week after Easter.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Laura, commencement is not listed on here. Is that because it's, is it going to be the 29th amendment?
That...
I can answer that one. So we, on the, I, I'm, what you have in front of you is more updated than I'm showing on the screen in terms of commencement. So for the, for the 2020, for the 2020-21 calendar, we have a tentative agreement with CSU for it to be on Sunday, May 30th. We work with CSU. We do not have a date yet for the commencement for the class of 2022. We're still working on that, but we're, we usually go for that same Sunday, that same time. So 30th is what's scheduled for '21. '22 is still not finalized with CSU.
Because they might take down that center?
We've had a lot of conversations with CSU. I'm looking at Shelley because I know she's been working with them, but right now, they've told us there's no plan, or, you know, they're going to continue to schedule, right? There's no plan to tear down the Woolstein Center, so we're continuing to schedule with them as we have in the past.
How does that work with prom? Are we, because normally prom is that weekend. Is that still the case, or we don't know about that?
I'd have to confer with the high school. The high school, Ms. Olowski, the high school secretary, in conjunction with Dr. Smithberger when he was here last year, are the ones that scheduled that tentative date, so I'm assuming they had plans for where prom would be, but I can verify when that would be.
And the date, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And then conferences no longer are during the day like they used to be. They're always evening conferences.
Evening, correct.
And that's preferable by all parents and staff, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Probably not a good idea to have prom the night before graduation.
Yeah, I don't think that'd be a good idea.
May I turn, any questions?
I just was going to comment that I did talk with Superintendent Timmons, and he, A, said that Polaris has had a chance to review it and is supportive of it, and is also, you know, thankful that all the districts have the spring break at the same time. It becomes a, it just becomes a challenge for the students that go to Polaris when their home district has a spring break at a different time. When that has happened in the past, those students don't get a spring break. They're either half a day at Polaris going to school and on break in their home district and vice versa. When their home district goes on break, they're still at Polaris. So it, it's a, it's a good thing that we're in alignment. Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it.
Good job, Laura. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next thing is approval of the October 17th Regular Board of Education meeting minutes. May I have a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you, George. Okay. Any comments? Treasurer, please take role.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Brings us to our treasurer's report. Mr. Agnastu.
Thank you, Colonel. For my report tonight, I have a few items for your consideration. The first one being the financial report for the month ending October 31st, 2019, which can be found in Exhibit A. Item B, petty cash fund for Strongsville High School. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that a petty cash fund be established for use at Strongsville High School in the amount of $100, and that Dolly Holtz be named trustee. This is more so that she has money available, give change when need be. Tax advancement, be a, be a resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the district participate in the Cuyahoga County Real Property Tax Advance Program. This includes requests for advances of all tax revenues collected in the year of 2020, which can be found in Exhibit B. This is an annual resolution that we must adopt for the county so we could receive our taxes. If we don't, we would receive them at the settlement dates, which would be in March and August. By being in this program, we would be able to receive 90% of our taxes as they're collected in January, February, and then again July, with the settlement dates being March and August. Item D, transfer of funds and return of advances. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the transfer of funds and returns of advances be, return of advances per Exhibit C be approved. The transfer of funds are closeout of student activity funds that are no longer active, and the return of the advances are for fiscal year 19, where we had reimbursable grant funds at end of the year and a negative cash balance, so we had to cover those deficits, and now that we received the cash from the state, advancing the money back, returning the advance back to the general fund. Item E, invoice order approval for student activity fund. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that in accordance with ORC that after the fact invoice, the board approves the following invoice payment, and the treasurer be authorized to sign, to sign the fiscal certificate for the Great Lakes Theater School Residency Program of $3,150. F, FY amendments to, FY 20 amendments to the permanent appropriation. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the permanent appropriation for fiscal year 20 be approved as, as defined in Exhibit D. And then item G is a separate vote. It's for First Stop Health Proposal of Services, and be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer to approve an agreement with First Stop Health, which is a virtual care company that provides telemedicine, care navigation, and enhanced EAP counseling for employees and their family members. Pricing is at $5.95 per member per month for a total annual cost of $39,270. And First Stop guarantees that annual savings will exceed total fees paid by 25%, or the district will receive credit or refund of the district. The cost is included in the district's medical premiums and will be paid by the Great Lakes Regional Council Government Consortium that we belong to, and the annual, the annual estimated savings we're predicting is 60,000, 67, $67,500. And that would be made up of, if you have some sort of condition that you would go to, you would go to the doctor's for, that you might be able to take through, take care of through the, the virtual care, where they could prescribe you a prescription, the claim cost would be cheaper than going to the actual physician or, or the hospital. All the other districts in our consortium are currently a part of it, and recommending that we get on board, too. Mr. Grozan?
I have a quick question. For the fees of our graduating seniors, juniors, sophomores, and freshmen?
We have to deal with this first, George.
I understand, but in accordance with the treasurer's report, are we making steps to make sure that those funds are being received? Are we taking steps forward to make sure that we're getting what we deserve?
Yeah, we've been communicating the district's policies to our schools and also working with school buildings and athletic office for if they have any prior fees, they can't participate in any extracurricular activities or participate in any field trips.
Okay.
So we've been verifying rosters and also working.
Thank you very much.
Returning to the agenda, may we have a motion on item G, please? So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you, George. Okay, discussion on joining the First Stop Health part of the consortium for telemedicine.
It's $5.95 per month.
Per employee, per month.
I would...
They guarantee savings.
The other, the other districts that are, that are involved, is that the prediction of saving $60,000, is that based on, on our, on the other member district's history, or what's that based on?
It's based on looking at our claims and then also predicting, based on type of claims, whether the employee would take advantage of the app or go to the, of the hospital.
And this is a one-year commitment, so if it doesn't pan out, we can...
Yeah.
...opt out next year.
Sounds like a pretty good deal to guarantee 25% savings, or 25% over.
At least.
At least.
You could certainly save more, so, nice job, George.
All right, thank you.
Okay, let's have a vote, please.
Yep. And just to clarify, before we vote, just to clarify Rich's point, I have the other districts that are in our consortium, and for example, Homestead Falls saved $78,000 on 369 employees. Berea saved $105,000 based on 668 employees, and Avon saved $41,000 based on 354 employees, and for reference, we have about 550 employees on the healthcare, so we should see somewhere above the, at least the 40,000, if not north of that.
One other quick comment, if I may do. It's good that we're doing the savings, but if we could get feedback at the end of the year on is it helpful to the employees?
Right.
Because it certainly seems like it would be, but I don't want it to be just, hey, we saved money. I want to make sure that it's actually beneficial to the employees.
Correct. It needs to be utilized.
Right.
Okay. Now may we have a vote.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Motion passes. And that concludes my report. If there's no further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Mr. Superintendent, your report, please.
Thank you, Colonel. Before I start with the timely information, I want to apologize. I see Stacy sitting out there. Stacy was another, was it, she was another phenomenal member of our calendar committee, so thank you for your efforts and thank you for being here. Ann was blocking my view, so. So thank you, Stacy. I appreciate it. With that, just a few dates I have on the screen over here before we get to our next meeting, so I don't think we have to announce, but we have no school for Wednesday through Friday next week for our Thanksgiving break, and we wish all of our students and families and community a wonderful Thanksgiving. You can always visit strongsvilleathletics.org to see the upcoming sports season. We've got, teams are settled, we've got practices started, so the winter sports season will be starting here shortly. And then it's, it's getting to that holiday time of the year, so we encourage everybody to go out. There's a listing of our winter concerts through the next meeting. There's more concerts after that, but whether it's seeing our choral department or orchestra or band at the middle schools or high schools, come out and see our talented students, and those dates are there, and they're also on our website. The other item that's actually on the agenda is the 2020 Board of Education meeting dates. So this is an annual item that's going to be on the organizational meeting agenda in January, but just wanted to give you a chance to look at these dates and provide any feedback on those. So if you, you have a handout in front of you, if you want to take that out and take a look at the handout. Just highlight a few differences. So our meetings are typically the first and third Thursday of every month at 7:00 PM, and if we start from the top and go down, in January, we are suggesting starting with the second and fourth Thursdays, so that would be the 9th and the 23rd. The reason being is the district is still on break on this January 2nd, so we bump those down and have them every other week like we do. So second and fourth Thursday. February, the first meeting, we would, we're looking at the location being at the middle school and starting at 6:00 PM. For the past few years, the PTA has done their Founder's Day recognition at 6:30 PM at the middle school, so that allows us to have a quick meeting at 6 o'clock and then get ready for the Founder's Day in that evening. The next change to the normal schedule is June. Instead of the third Thursday of the month, we always go with the fourth Thursday of the month. That gives George and his department the opportunity to close out the books on the fiscal year and have the appropriate resolutions ready for your consideration. In July, we only have one meeting, and it's traditionally that Monday, so Monday, July 13th is what we're proposing there. And then October, although the Rotary has not finalized their dates for Taste of Excellence, the last two years, it's been the first Thursday of the month, and we've moved our meetings accordingly. If we move our meeting this year, that would put three meetings in September. So what we're recommending is we go to the second and fourth Thursday in October, the 8th and the 22nd. There's five Thursdays in October, so it keeps with our kind of every other week pattern. And then December, we traditionally only have one meeting, and that's the second Thursday. So that kind of gives an overview of the changes. The only thing that's not on there that I'd like to bring to the board's attention for consideration, Polaris has offered to host one of our board meetings on their property twofold, to give us a firsthand opportunity to see the renovations and to see the work and have Polaris highlight some of the programs there. I talked to Mr. Shepherd today again to confirm, so as we think about this and finalize, if it's the will of the board to have an off-site meeting at Polaris, that would be an opportunity to have that feedback and then put that into place prior to voting at the organizational meeting. So any discussion or feedback from the board on the, the meeting dates and/or locations?
No, I think going to Polaris is a great idea.
Okay. Richard?
Yeah, the, the dates are fine, and just some of the history that came up in conversation, and I, I'm, I know the person who came up with the idea, and we, what we have thought about is...
Intimately, do you know him?
Let's not go there. But, so the idea is, is to just have that opportunity. I kind of copied the idea from our board member in North Homestead, and he actually, after North Homestead finished their construction, we had a Polaris meeting at North Homestead. And it was just, it was, it was great to be able to see it and collaborate that way. And so the loose idea is that next year, our boards would visit Polaris, and then the year after that, we would reverse the process, and the Polaris boards would move their board meetings to the individual districts, and just, just a way to better get that information out and build that relationship.
Okay. George?
I, I really, at this point... Um, I, I really, at this point, I would traditionally like to be in this room. But if we have a desire to go to Polaris, then let's just do it.
Okay. And we'll count on you for the Rotary information once that gets updated.
Yeah, I, I will provide the, um, the date and time for the Taste of Strongsville, once I, once I receive it.
Alright, thank you.
So if it's okay, uh, with the board members, I'll look, I'll talk with Polaris and I'll look at our meetings and pick a meeting date, uh, to schedule there.
Fine.
Okay? Uh, with that, we'll move on to business services. This is actually the addendum, so if you go to the addendum in the agenda. And, uh, Mr. Brechner is going to go up, um, and share, uh, one resolution in the addendum for business services.
Uh, good evening, everyone. The item for, on the, the agenda for business services is the purchase of two video scoreboards for Strongsville High School main gymnasium. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Board of Education approves the purchase of two video scoreboards for the Strongsville High School main gymnasium from ScoreVision at the quoted price of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, per the terms outlined in the exhibit. Be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Board of Education approves the scoreboard advertising sales agreement between the Board of Education and Strongsville Athletic Boosters. The Strongsville Athletic Boosters will make an initial donation of thirty thousand dollars, followed by five annual donations of nineteen thousand dollars per year thereafter, with the potential for larger annual donations, should the adequate funds become available to fulfill the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar commitment earlier, per the terms outlined in the exhibit.
Thank you, Mr. Brechner. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane, George. Okay, discussion. Jane, what do you think of this?
I think it's a great idea. I mean, a standard scoreboard, George just told me, would be forty-four thousand dollars. So this is a gift of eighty thousand dollars in excess of just covering our basic scoreboard needs, so I think it's going to be an exciting addition. The only thing I would ask is, um, the graphics that were presented to us for the location, it's covering up that Southwest General logo on that so- and I don't know if that's an issue or not with that banner that's, or that sign that's on the end of the gym. If we have to have that there, if it has to be relocated, or?
Softball. It's a softball question.
Good, I, I'll start easy.
No, I thought of that too, I think she's right.
The initial plan is to move that Southwest logo to the opposite side.
Okay.
Um, we have a meeting with Southwest General tomorrow to discuss this. Um, but they are disappointed with how small that logo is, so we want to create it bigger and then move it to the opposite side, so it can be seen.
Would they entertain putting it as part of the rotation on the scoreboard?
Correct.
Okay.
So, that's our hope.
Okay.
Danny, other question I would have is, in the diagrams we saw, at least, it appeared that the scoreboard was almost touching the Strongsville Mustang banner at the top there. Is it going to be separated? Is it going to be spaced between the scoreboard?
It, it's going to look like that.
Yeah, I think that's too close. I think the scoreboard is too close to the, to the S.
Yeah, but we've got, but we've got, we've got a piece of conduit that's going from the exit sign straight up. And it would be difficult, it'd be difficult to move that scoreboard left or right. Um, you'd have to put it on pedestals. I, I just think that having that scoreboard next to the S and the horse, I think would be, there's no way, there's no way we're going to be able to put that video scoreboard over top of conduit. It's just-
Well, the conduit needs to be moved, that's all. You could run that up here.
Yeah, well, well said.
Okay, I, I honestly think that, I mean aesthetically, I think it's, runs into it, so you just take a look at that.
Sure.
I'm not the artist, but.
Yeah. We did, I mean, it's something that we looked at right away because we noticed that, that the drawing could be covering up the, the Southwest logo.
Yep, okay, it may need to move conduit.
And the, the scoreboard for the opposite side?
Correct, on the north end.
On the north end. Um, I know it's much smaller than the other scoreboards, but we're not going to cover up any of those banners, am I correct?
No, so the size of our scoreboard right now that's in there is a ten by six, this is exactly the same size.
So, and, and we'll be able to separate that just maybe a touch?
Correct.
Just because those banners are very, very important for the school district, for everybody in the community. And I think everybody loves to see those banners as, you know, state champs, state champs. Yeah, I, I, I just think that's, it's, it's really important.
Correct, yep.
Thank you, sir.
Richard?
So I wanted to start by just saying thank you to the boosters. I mean, this is, this is a big deal.
Huge.
Um, and for them to come for, A, to create, come up with the idea, uh, to work through the idea, cause there were a lot of bumps and, uh, uh, hills and valleys in the process. But, uh, you know, uh, for them to come forward with the idea and ultimately to commit to paying for it for the benefit of our students, uh, is a great thing and, and we should thank them. Especially want to thank, uh, Dan Martin and Keith Hausum for doing a lot of the, uh, a lot of the legwork and a lot of the, uh, the nitpicking, um, behind the scenes. Uh, I don't begrudge ScoreVision, you know, they, they brought out their contract, but, uh, we had our, our legal, uh, advisors along with Dan, along with Keith, along with, uh, Denny, go through that with a fine-tooth comb and make sure that it's in our best interests. So publicly, we need to thank them for it and I thank you, thank you and, and your team for that. If it's not obvious, I like scoreboards. It, uh, so I'm excited to have that, uh, to have this. It's the latest and the greatest and the, and the newest, uh, uh, out there for this kind of, uh, um, information. It gives us a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, opportunity, uh, in the future. What I do want to highlight is, and that I'm excited about, is that it has that educational, uh, uh, component to it. There is curriculum for it. Um, this is the kind of thing that our, our students can see and, and work with and learn how to use. And it becomes that kind of education where, gee, maybe this is the kind of thing I want to do for a job. This is the kind of thing I want to do for a living. So I think that's a great thing too. Um, and I am pleased that the contract protects the district with the boosters. I don't want anyone to think that, you know, the booster's, uh, commitment ends there. They still do what they do, which is raise money for our students. So if this is wildly successful, we're going to raise even more money that'll then get turned around for our students. And that's important, uh, uh, for the public to understand. Ultimately, our boosters are, are a vehicle to channel that money. If anybody wants to donate large amounts of money, it's tax deductible because it's the, uh, through the booster organization. Um, but it's a great thing, so I fully support it and thank you, Danny.
Night at the races is February twenty-second, correct? And starts at six o'clock at Mashad's. So, everybody and anybody who is listening or watching this program, go to the Athletic Boosters. If you've got a student who's participating in sports, please just go. It's a wonderful evening, it, it's a lot of fun. Um, but please, please, just go, because our organizations need money to help support the students, their, their uniforms and everything else. So please, 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 show up and i- it, it's a fun night, it really, really is.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
I'd also like to recognize our treasurer who did a lot of work on these contracts. Thank you, George, for your work and for the consultation with our doctor over here. So thank you guys also for being in on this. It'll be a good improvement to our facilities. And with that, may we have a, a vote, please?
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I'd also like to just echo, cause I know last time I was the deciding factor to pause. And as Ann wrote in the post, that I was the deciding factor not to pa- or to pause. I just want to share publicly that, um, I am completely comfortable with where everything ended up. It wasn't rushed, our due diligence was taken. Um, everything that we wanted to address was addressed from our maintenance, from our tech, from the contract. So, um, I'm excited and again, thank the boosters for their work to, uh, bring this new scoreboard to, um, to our district. And I know our, our internal departments are working on a project timeline to, uh, work within our PE classes, within our maintenance, within our tech, um, to be prepared to install as soon as is feasible, so. With that, uh, want to go next to our curriculum update. Uh, Erin, our Director of Curriculum, has one item for this evening. Erin?
Hi, good evening. As Dr. Riba said, I have one evening, or one item this evening, and that is a field experience and student teaching agreement. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the field experience and student teaching agreement between Kent State University and the Strongsville City School District be approved as presented in Exhibit F.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have no, no items under Student Services for this month. Uh, next up is Assistant Superintendent Jenny Pelco with the Human Resources Report. Jenny?
Thank you, Dr. Riba. I have several items for your consideration this evening under Human Resources. Under E1, we have resignations for non-certificated staff. Under E2, appointment for non-certificated staff. Appointments for certificated substitutes. Uh, appointments for non-certificated substitutes. Appointments for, uh, certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion. Uh, non-certificate, non-certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion. Under E3, changes in hours for non-certificated staff. Under E4, change in status for non-certificated staff. Under E5, uh, contract recommendation for non-certificated staff. Under E6, uh, medical leave for an administrative staff member, medical leaves for certificated staff, and medical leaves for non-certificated staff. Under E7, unpaid, uh, leave for certificated staff and unpaid medical leave for non-certificated. Under E8, volunteer chaperones and mentors and volunteer coaches for our winter indoor track program. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
And finally, uh, Director of Instructional Technology, uh, Dave Binkley with his technology report for the month. Dave?
I do have one item in front of the boards tonight for technology upgrades. Um, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Board of Education approves the purchase of Chromebooks with Google Chrome Management License and a Chromebook cart, or Chromebook carts for the district kindergarten use. Um, at the cost of fifty-eight thousand seventy-one dollars and twenty cents.
Questions?
Questions?
Colonel, before I conclude my report, I did want to just update, because last time when we talked about scoreboards, we talked about the main gym and we also talked about softball and baseball. Um, just to kind of close the loop on that, we do plan on talking about softball and baseball. If, if we're able to, uh, prepare that in time, it will be for our December meeting. Um, to have a presentation from the athletic department, as well as if we feel ready, an item for board consideration. I would share that, uh, Representative from Daktronics, uh, which is one of the companies that has put in a proposal for the project, is, uh, here tonight. So if you have any questions at the conclusion of the meeting, I'm sure he'd be willing to have a conversation with you if, if you would so choose. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. And before Dave sat down, I was actually going to tell, uh, Steve and he, thank you to your guys and your department for the work you will do on the scoreboards. I know it'll be top-notch and I know it's a lot of work. Now, we all know it's a lot of work, so thank you in advance for what you do every day. All of your staff that's out there, Cameron, we want to thank all of you, Erin and, and Dan, everybody that comes and does their job every day. We don't take you for granted, so thank you. Alright, uh, we turn now to a report on the Polaris Career Center, Chapter One. Richard?
Uh, if you hurry up and leave now, you can maybe make the tail end of the, uh, Polaris Information Night. Um, but, uh, as, as I announced last time, uh, for, uh, sophomores, there's an information night. What I do want to highlight is that even if you didn't go to that meeting, see your guidance counselor or parents, uh, contact your student's guidance counselor if you're interested. Uh, tours can be scheduled, uh, information can be, uh, uh, on the different programs that, uh, you might be interested in. Get that information, make an informed decision. And then I wanted to give a shout out to Chef O, Chef Alchesky, and the Culinary Program. Uh, they recently received the Ohio School Boards Association Northeast Region's two thousand nineteen Most Outstanding JVS and Vocational Program. Uh, it was earned this year to recognize the program for its years of excellence. Um, the student, the, you know, chef, uh, does a great job with the students with that program. Every year, the students graduate and receive scholarships to numerous culinary institutes throughout the, uh, United States and go on to great careers. So that's one of the programs that, uh, if you're interested in, you should find out about at Polaris. And that concludes my Polaris report.
Legislation?
Legislation, I do want to raise a red flag. There was quite a bit of discussion, uh, at the State House this week on, uh, House Bill not three zero five, which is the Cup Patterson, uh, Education Funding, uh, reboot, whatever you want to call it. Um, there was quite a bit of, uh, the Finance Committee, uh, had quite a bit of hearings on it. And the part that I want to draw everyone's attention to is yesterday, uh, Householder was quoted talking about it and said that, uh, he thinks we need to do some kind of reform. And he floated the idea that our taxes won't increase, but instead of the property taxes that we pay today staying local, they'll all go to Columbus and then Columbus will figure out how to dole that money out more equitably. And I understand the challenges, I understand the challenges that Ohio as a state faces with regards to education. But the fact of the matter is, is that it's just another way to rob Peter to pay Paul. Um, and local control is important and that's what, uh, we have here in Strongsville. So I, uh, I suggest that everybody, uh, pay attention to it. We'll continue to keep, uh, the public updated on it. But make sure to contact, uh, Mr. Patton and Mr. Dolan and, uh, make sure they know that, uh, in Strongsville, we know that's not a good idea. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Richard. It's important to remember, everybody should remember, about only forty cents, every dollar we send to Columbus comes back to Strongsville. So they do rob us blind and we need to keep the money here, so we know best what to do with it. Uh, next report is on City Council and, uh, I would like to recognize Council Lady Kelly Kosak is here with us tonight. Thank you, Kelly, for being here. Uh, I had the privilege, thank you, Jane, for attending the meeting on Monday night.
Thank you.
And, uh, I think Kelly would agree with me that it wasn't really a lot of substantive issues discussed. Um, some things about radios and some good questions about communications devices and, and how we're going to move the city forward. Um, and also there was some discussion about Highway eighty-two and forty-two and how that's eventually coming to completion here. The lanes are open and, uh, hopefully the snowplows won't take out the new planters in the middle, at least not right away. So other than that, Kelly, anything struck in your head about, uh? Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Okay, uh, the Strongsville Education Foundation, Ms. Dr. Riba, did you get to go?
I did get to go. Um, they spent most of the meeting, uh, approving educator grants. So they had a series of submissions for educator grants. Uh, they looked at approving those as well as planning some, uh, additional events, uh, that will be coming in the spring.
Thank you. Okay, um, and the Strongsville Education Foundation does do a tremendous job of supporting our schools and our students. So, uh, any of those events as well, as George mentioned, are well worth, uh, I think, the jockeys and julepses in May. And that's a big fundraiser for that organization. Uh, PTA and then Student Achievement, Ms. Ludwig?
Um, I did not go to PTA. Did you go to the PTA Council, George?
I did not.
I just encourage everyone to always join your PTAs.
Laura's here, so we, we could, you know.
I can tell you that all of our units- I just want to let you know that all of our units are doing blankets and socks, correct, from Strongsville to the state?
New blankets and new socks. Um, we're collecting for about a hundred and twenty-five children. And I also wanted to just touch on, two of our, um, elementary schools had really great fundraising this fall and they're bringing COSI back for the fundraise, or for the, um, assemblies. So I knew Jane would appreciate that, Sarar and Maraski.
And don't we have a chili cook-off coming up shortly?
We did that already.
Oh, you did that already?
We did that last week, um-
It was cooked, got it.
We had eight businesses make chili for the food bank and we raised over twelve hundred dollars for the food bank.
Perfect.
Excellent, thank you so much. Thanks for rescuing us, Laura, appreciate it. Okay, and Student Achievement?
Oh, right, Student Achievement. This month I want to highlight, um, Alex Maddox and her AP seminar class at the high school. She, um, has her students researching topics that are pertaining to the theme of transformation.
She, um, has her students researching topics that are pertaining to the theme of transformation. So they had to read a packet that included, um, speeches and academic journals and a song and a poem. And based on what they read, they had to come up with a topic that they were going to, uh, research intently. And, um, but it starts with an argument essay that they have to prepare. So they've been really working hard and they have really intense themes like equal pay for women in sports, marijuana legalization effects on racial minorities, and the benefits of peaceful protests are just a few of the examples of, um, topics that they are researching. And then they're going to present a speech that's between six to eight minutes. Now, as all of you that are sitting here, you know how long six to eight minutes feels when you're, uh, listening. So, um, they're going to be starting these speeches after Thanksgiving. I'm planned to attend, uh, a class so that I can hear some of their speeches and have a follow-up, um, at our next meeting, but I'm sure they'll be amazing. So the writing curriculum that we've been stressing for the last several years that began when they were in elementary school is progressing all the way to senior year and will take them to beyond. So I'm, look forward to seeing what they come up with. That's our Student Achievement.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane. All right, uh, Finance Committee, we met in, uh, October in the next meeting. And we talked about, uh, the bond issue, which was discussed at the last meeting. Uh, our next meeting will be February 10th, uh, at 6:30 here. The Policy Committee, um, will meet on December 5th at 6:30 PM here. Uh, Facilities Committee, George?
Um, will be meeting January 30th, um, in this building, um, back in the Guild Library. Yep.
Okay, and this is...
Room 15.
Room 15.
Room 15, okay. And the Business Advisory Council Committee meeting with Richard is going to be on January 10th at 7:30 at the high school. All right. Uh, it brings us to the Consent Calendar. And just as a periodic reminder, a Consent Calendar vote is where we approve everything on the agenda that has an asterisk next to it with one vote. If there's any exceptions, of course, we note them at the time and break them out as separate items. We didn't have any of those tonight, so I will entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Anastu?
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Lovelace?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Colonel Ovens?
Yes. The next item is a Board Policy, a new policy 9700 dot oh one on advertising and commercial activities, and a new policy on promotional political, political activities. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Um, so a discussion. Jane?
Um, well, these were policies that were enacted to, um, get some clarity for the district and everyone, um, in the community on what is permissible pertaining to signs and political campaigning on school grounds.
Okay, Richard?
So I just wanted to, uh, 9700 oh one is, comes from our, uh, the agency we use to help us with policies. It's an established policy. Uh, the, the rules remain with the board. The application of the rules, uh, will be by, uh, Dr. Riba or his designee, but it adds some, uh, clarity to that. And then, uh, promotional political activities, uh, was created by us. And, uh, I was gonna highlight that it was Duke who brought out that. Traditionally, uh, during, uh, campaign season, uh, we have, uh, political candidates who, you know, uh, will be at football games or what have you. And it just puts some language there to make sure that they can't, uh, be over-exuberant in trying to get their information to, uh, people as they're coming to the football game. Uh, we copied the, uh, standard of the Election Commission, Election, uh, Board of Elections. They have a rule that you can't be, uh, closer than 100 feet to a polling location. So we copied that and, uh, we'll make sure to get our tape measure out and find out where 100 feet is from the entrance to, uh, Pat Condon Stadium.
George? Any comments?
Done.
Okay, I have a comment on it. I, I don't have a problem with any of it except the distance. I think 100 feet's too far from the stadium because that puts them in the ditch across the street. So I would like to propose that we consider reducing that distance. Um, I think as long as they're outside of the entranceway and not in the way of people that are trying to come into the stadium, uh, which is, that's where my experience has been.
Should it maybe be something more broad in that it, it's a spot as designated by the superintendent and not a specific... Because what if something gets built and then we have to modify it again?
Yeah, that would work, and you know, or on the sidewalks that lead up to the stadium, something to that effect so that they're not, we have enough trouble getting across that, that road.
Right.
So that's the only thing.
Outside of the stadium.
The hu, the 100 feet, and again, we'd have to get a ruler out, but the 100 feet, when I looked at it, puts it on the sidewalks and puts, you know, uh, when you're...
Not where the car was.
Correct. It's outside of the car, but when I took a look at it, the 100 feet puts it on the sidewalks. Uh, if you, if, where the parking lot is, the side parking lot for, uh, between the high school and the, uh, and the stadium, you'd be in that area.
I like Jane's idea, though, and I would, I'd turn it over to Cameron to take a look and see what would be reasonable, maybe on the sidewalk somewhere leading up to the stadium or wherever, but whatever you'd come back and tell us where you think it would go. You and Denny could work it and, does that sound okay with you?
I, I, I'm fine with it. I mean, if, if we keep it, um, I'm looking at the policy now. At least 100 feet away, uh, maybe we could put something or an area as designated by the superintendent. You know, if we have, because, i- if we have an area, I think the 100, I think leaving the 100 in there as the guideline is that's where we're at. But then if it, if it is something where there's a location where it would put you in a odd spot, then I can have the opportunity to say, we can move it up to here. I'm fine with that if that's what the board would like to do.
You don't have to stand in the culvert. Okay.
You okay? Yeah, not in the culverts. You okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, then, uh, as modified, um, if we could approve it, then that would be fine. All right, thank you. Let's have a vote, then.
We have a motion.
Yes.
Oh, we didn't get a motion?
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Lovelace?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Colonel Ovens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, Board of Education, other. Ms. Lovelace?
Um, yes, this Sunday is the tree lighting on the commons. So if you want to, um, navigate the wonderful traffic that's between 82 and 42, you can come see Santa and the square all lit up. And the Historical Society will also be open, and that's from 5:30 to 8:00 this Sunday, the November 24th, in case you're watching this, um, on delay sometime. Um, so I hope to see everyone there. It might be a cold night. I will be standing outside in my village attire.
And Jane, I just want to thank you because you've been so good about reminding us of all those activities, especially the cow pie thing and, and, uh, the Historical Society and all of these activities in the city. I'm so glad you keep up with that because you're much better at it than any of us are, so thank you very much.
The Village is also open the two, first two weekends in December, um, from 2:00 to 5:00. And it's open and free to the public. All the houses are decorated for Christmas, so again, come and see us.
Yep. Richard?
Just happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. George?
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Okay, um, I had the privilege of graduating from the very first Strongsville Citizens Police Academy here last Tuesday. And I have to tell everybody in Strongsville, we are so fortunate to have the police department, the fire department that we do. The city services in our city are wonderful. And we really should, you know, if you see a cop, thank a cop. If you see a fireman, thank a fireman. Because, uh, if you're on the ground and you're the one that's hurt and that EMT shows up, you're gonna be very, very grateful at that time. But that's not the time to be grateful. The time to be grateful is knowing that they're there. Uh, when you call 911 and you need a response and the policeman shows up, that's the time to be grateful, but it's also the time when you see him in the street to say, hey, thanks for what you do. And as a veteran, I know that means a lot to us when somebody thanks us for our service. So please remember to thank them for their service as well. And if anybody's interested out there, I think there'll be another, I know there'll be another Citizens Police Academy coming up sometime, I think by next summer, if Chief Fender has his way and has the money to do it. Um, it was a very interesting, exciting and informative experience. And if you qualify, I think it's a great thing for somebody to put in for a citizen who's interested to put in for it. So just, uh, information for everybody. We do have need for executive session tonight. Dr. Riba?
To consider the employment of a public employee or official and to review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Um, let's have a vote, George, on that.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Lovelace?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Colonel Ovens?
Yes. Uh, we'll enter into executive session at 8:15, and we have no need for, uh, resuming public session after that. So everyone have a safe and happy Thanksgiving with your families and have a good evening.